One of these orange sheets tells you everything that was in the paper and that, I believe, was sent out to you about a week ago. Has everyone had a chance to look through them? Do you...how do we want to proceed? Pros, cons, questions? We have sitting over there at the edge trying to not let us know where he is. It's George Day who is on...who is the Warwick representative to the tech. And they had a meeting on Wednesday night, wasn't that right?
Yes.
Last week, yeah. And they discussed this. So he can probably fill us in if we have any questions. Because Sharon, I mean Peggy and I went and met with the two superintendents on Tuesday and they ran through this, but it was pretty quick. In an hour, we went through everything we know, I guess. And there's a lot of things like Deb sent me some questions and I truly don't know the answers to those questions. So maybe we can get filled in or we can brainstorm or whatever. So Jeannie.
I guess I'd like to know what was the outcome of the technical school.
I believe that was in the paper. Is that right, George? That was an approval?
To pursue the study.
Okay.
To apply for the grant?
Yes.
Yeah. And Turner's...
Thank you.
And Turner's Falls also approved it at a Tuesday night meeting. So all...yes, Martha.
Sorry, could I just ask the question?
Why don't you use the...
When we are considering this Gil-Montague regional and so forth that you were just referring to, I realize we're going to have our discussion, but are we in the end having to choose one of these three options to concentrate on or does this study all three? The grant would study all three of these.
The study really isn't anything specific. It's a feasibility study only on regionalization and the efficiency of it. But it doesn't tie us to anything. What they...they just were coming up with some ideas of what might work, what might not work, and these were just three things they threw out. But it's really not specific to these. It's only specific to how much we would save in time and money and efficiency by regionalization of one kind or another.
Right. So we're not choosing between one, two, and three to study?
Uh-uh. Not at all.
It's a study of all of them.
Exactly. Thank you. A study of all of them plus anything else that sort of pops up?
Got it.
Jeannie.
My question is... My question is, are...is everybody combining to apply for the grant or is everybody applying for the grant individually? Because we're seeing it from Mohawk, we're seeing it from Tech, we're seeing it from Gil-Monig...well, it would be Gil-Montague, ourselves, and Tech that would be applying. Is that what's happening or is each district applying separately for the grant?
Oops. Don't blame you for asking. I understand that the towns have to apply and so it would be Montague that would be applying for this grant under the name and the schools that would be involved. I can't find someplace that would say what schools would be affected, but there's...but the towns have to apply. Like for the grant that the Hart Committee did, I believe Northfield and Warwick applied for the last one they got and Berniston and Lyden for the first grant that they got. And I spoke today to Michelle Garuso and she had this afternoon already spoken to the superintendent at Tech, Michael Sullivan, and they would like to...if this grant comes through, they would like to work with...the Hart Committee would like to work with this grant being footed by the Tech School, us and Turner's, to not reinvent the wheel, to everybody put this pot of money together and try to come up with...not everybody doing exactly the same thing, but doing different things within studying. So she is going to meet with him sometime. She had spoken to him today.
So I guess I'm still confused about is each...if each town is applying for the grant, they're all not going to get it?
No. One town is applying for this grant.
And how does...
I don't know how many other people are applying for it, but on this, there's just the three schools that are involved, but one town has to apply for it.
I don't understand why the towns...
Okay, hold on.
We have one at a time talking. I can't...
I'm going to ask George if he understands that.
The only thing that I have to say is that this is not unique to these three districts. The state is asking districts and schools all across the state to do this program. And Dave might be able to help out on this. I'm not sure that anybody that applies for this grant would have to put any money up. You would just apply for the grant. So I'm not sure whether the district would apply or an individual town of a district would have to apply.
I understood from talking the other day that the individual...that one town would be the signer of it, but it would be...it would be given to the communities or whatever that go after the grant. And it is a competitive grant. David?
Well, I thought I...
I did.
You tricked me. Okay. So I put some board notes in front of you so to try to make...I knew it was going to be a little confusing. So from what I could tell from the documentation...I did two things. I looked at the documentation and I talked to...oh, it should be right on the front, the white? Yeah. Okay. So I had a conversation with the Gil-Montague superintendent and he informed me that their committee had created this grant, the one that was written here, that was specifically what the school committee wanted for Gil-Montague. And so this...it doesn't mean it's in stone, but they're looking at more of a...well, it's pretty clear in their application that they're trying to really consolidate and join together our district with their district. And they also have a separate agreement, my understanding is, with the technical school, but they've been kind of working on that partnership over the last couple of years trying to share some resources and have students go back and forth because they're closer in proximity. So those are the ones I know about. And then I decided to call the state, the Department of Revenue who puts out these grants, and say what exactly is what we have to do. Because in your letter from Mar-Har, it looks as though they want to share a superintendent and a business manager. I think there was some outreach from the Mohawk Trail and they in turn wanted to, you know, share your business manager and your superintendent. The things that I found out when I talked to both of those two, the superintendents, is that they really would want to bring down their own staff to do things. So if it was, let's say, Mohawk Trail, he would want to bring his business manager down, he might want to bring his, you know, special ed down, or some of the people that work for him to work here directly. So that's not a bad proposal. So when I called, I said, "It seems like all of us are trying to put together something that would be good for our district," which is not a bad thing, "and start the conversation about efficiency and regionalization." And just to get to that, because it's efficiency and regionalization, regional school districts have to apply, not the cities and towns. It's a little different than what they did in Berniston and the other towns. So outlining that, when I talked to him, I said, you know, "There was a concept by some of the members of my committee that wanted to look at kind of more of a larger scale, something that we can, you know, grow to, but the overall vision would be about having a centralized location, centralized central office, all of those functions like your business manager and your accounts payable and receivables, and those functions that really don't need to be in the schoolhouse to function well. If you could bring as many districts as wanted to come into this collaborative, almost like a corporation where they have a corporation and they have these, you know, other satellites where they take care of things, it could bring a common, you know, economics to scale. So we might be able to bid. I mean, when we go out to try to get even software for our computers for our elementary school kids, our prices are outrageous because we have so few children. So those are the kind of things that you could think about consolidating. And we have a staff, you know, it's a small staff, but if they were in a larger office, they could do more than they're doing here. And at this point, they're doing multiple jobs in the district to patch together a full-time job. So when I kind of said, you know, "That's my understanding that could happen," the guy, and I forget his name who's in charge of it, and you just called the number on the grant application, he said, "That is exactly what the state wants and we haven't heard anybody make an application like that at this time." And he was encouraging because I said, "Well, it's late, we only have one district, we don't have any other districts that, you know, we've partnered with in this way." And his comment to me was that since other districts have asked, you know, to join with us, that we could actually put in an application for something like that, that's a larger, more down-the-road vision without having other people have to sign on. Now, again, that's, you know, this has been really quick and fast, but I felt like when the response to the, you know, the article in the paper, which is not always necessarily accurate, I think that the committee needed to kind of regroup and say, "What do you want?" And just aside is that, you know, Pioneer is one of the most academically strong districts in the area, you know. So all of those factors, I think you should consider. That's kind of why I wrote it down. And so maybe having a discussion about what do you want it to look like, not just to get by the next year or two, but what globally? All right, now I'll be quiet.
It's not an application. So it's sort of, you know, do you express your concept and get through the door and then negotiate from there. My initial response was that this is not broad enough, the Gil-Montague proposal, but it's in motion and I would hate to undermine it. So I think we should keep that in mind. Ruth, I like your broader idea, but bringing it by the 16th, which is in two days, especially if it needs a municipal sponsor?
That's not...
Okay.
You could do it yourself if you want.
Yeah. The only unacceptable outcome to me would be that we do nothing here. That...because I would see that as an attempt to just thwart change and not...we need to avail ourselves of this, we need to integrate it with our other planning, the Hart Committee, and I have no idea how you put a dollar amount on this thing because there's nothing attached to...but I'm assuming, assuming that the funding will be essentially to consultants.
I'm not sure that's true. It's up to, well, a hundred thousand dollars or if we did something kind of a little...
I didn't want to...like if you want to go in a different direction, I'm really okay with that.
Okay. So when I was reading this grant proposal, when I was reading...
Close.
Should I hate these things?
Come on, go ahead. Eat that, Mike.
When I was reading the grant proposal, I looked at it and the way I read it is that there are three aspects, Roman numeral one, two, and three. And the way I understood it was you're picking one of those.
What you're...what they did was just threw out these three ideas of what it might look like. Peggy, am I right at...can you speak to...can you speak to it? Yeah.
Okay, hold on.
Peg, yeah, I want you to tell them what you heard too, because you were at the same meeting as I was.
One is enough.
Go ahead, two mice. Peggy, do it.
I think that Gil-Montague and the Techs are simply trying to get the ball rolling and they came up with three very different ideas of possible scenarios. They've talked about the working with, you know, Gil-Montague said they've talking about working with Tech, letting some of the academics be done at Turner's Falls High School and maybe letting some of those students experience some of the Tech courses. Then they're trying to just broaden the possibilities. I mean, this is just them saying, "We're open to," you know, and then when they saw that we were interested, we thought...they thought, "Well, this is what the state wants, is as many working together, coming up with ideas. We may bring in some consultants that look at all the data, which is essential, all the costs, does it work, what would work?" You know, I think the state would...is happy to see us with open minds.
I move that the school committee join the Gil-Montague Franklin County Tech proposal.
I second you.
And I'm done. That's all I have to say.
Discussion?
I'll second that.
Good discussion. I see Jeannie, Martha, and then Deb.
Oh, sorry.
One of my questions under this grant by Gil-Montague, it's a very...right now, they're outlining what they really want to do and that's Pioneer would be basically preschool through grades eight. That's what this says in the first section.
One scenario.
That's one scenario. I think joining them because they've already put in the initial application seems fine, but I question...they've been talking with the Tech School now for a couple of years. We're just coming in on it. I'm just afraid that...I just questioned how much influence we would have on the final determination.
So according to the paper, Gil-Montague prefers number two, the second is their first choice, and then the third, Roman numeral three. But as you say, I just want to make clear in my mind that this does not obligate us in any way, shape, or form, right? Okay. This is for the money to explore the options. We don't have to choose an option. Do you have any idea what the timeframe is after we apply for the grant? Let's say, when do they let us know when we get it or...
I didn't hear anything. George, did you hear anything about that? No. It was sort of like they weren't quite sure either. I guess until we get the grant, if we get it, then we'll find out stuff, but I think at this point, it's sort of premature.
It's a bit of a long-range situation, it sounds like.
Right.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
See what you started off?
So...
I don't know. Two firsts. And I report any...well, I didn't see...
Go ahead. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Well, as I understand it, this is just a proposal to gather information and paid for under the grant. And these three scenarios are things that they're looking at that could happen, but probably will not. I mean, those are going to be tailored also once it's all said and done and once people figure out if they're going to join onto it or if they're not. So, and as far as the timeframe is, how long is it going to be? I mean, how long do grants take? A year, two, three?
Not necessarily.
Till they gather their information? Till they gather their information, right?
I don't...I'm not convinced that it has to be just a grant to determine what you want to do. I think they're looking for a little bit more action than that, but again, you know, I can go back and get more specifics, but that's not what I walked away from. And the fact that it's a competitive grant, I'm thinking, are they going to, a competitive grant, to just pursue something that you may or may not do and you may switch? I don't know. I don't know if it's like the grants that the town's got. I don't...I don't have that information. It's a different school for sure. I'm not sure.
Well, that's my piece and I'm sticking to it.
So my question...I had a handful of questions, but so there's no financial or legal obligations to this grant on our end with these other two schools and just the whole process? My other question was, will the study include a financial analysis for each proposal going out at least 10 years indexing for inflation and salary increases? And another question that I had was expected time commitments for our staff in central office to provide information to the group performing the study. What is that expected timeframe and for our staff to be working on that? So do they...will they have to be involved in digging up information and doing research? And that will take them away from their duties here if they...
Get to the microphone. I can't hear you.
Oh. Sorry. Do I have to say that all over again?
No, you just have to put the mic down a little closer.
So that was one of my questions in regards to that. And a question that I had, but it kind of answers itself up here on the front board notes, was how we went from looking for shared services to a total package of going into another school district and kind of being swallowed up. So I just wanted to find out the whole...
I have no idea about most of those questions and neither does Peg because we didn't touch on those. We had...
Nobody would know that.
Nobody would know that kind of stuff at this point. As far as going from just looking out to that, they reached out, they asked if we wanted to come to a meeting, we went to the meeting, we decided it was time to explore different options, the towns have been after us, David's been after us to explore the regionalization stuff. And so that's what we did. We went to a meeting, we listened, and we brought back information to us. So there's really nothing else. David?
And thank you for turning over those stones.
Thank you for turning over those stones. With respect to our say, we do have say and it should be defined in each district agreement in terms of how do you change it or revoke it? And...but ultimately, I can't see any way unless we came to just ruin this financial state and no ability to agree that anybody will be telling us how to do this. Our respective town meetings will be considering these questions. And if you think planning for this kind of change is a big job, accomplishing it will seem to be huge. Now, I believe it was this gentleman, your selectman in Lyden? No?
Member of the Hart Committee.
Member of the Hart Committee. I think I'm stealing your idea next, which at the Berniston Select Board meeting where the four town select boards were working on a letter urging the search committee to consider sharing superintendent and these sorts of options, the point was made, very good point, that you can get a lot done with, I would say, contracting or using intermunicipal agreements. So even short of getting everybody to line up and change district agreements and make something really different happen, we can engage in and test this without a full-blown marriage by using contracts, which are not bid contracts because we're essentially one municipality to another. And this is a huge option and opportunity for us.
So one of my questions is, why are we finding out about this so late? Does anybody know? I mean, it seems not very efficient of the state to not have done a better job reaching out to us since we were working on the Hart Committee's whole proposal last spring. So what's with the suddenly there's this grant? That feels really ridiculous to me and inefficient and inappropriate. I don't know why they wouldn't have said, you know, "Hey, you that are applying for this little piddly grant, we're about to release grants in the 200 grand range for the same thing. Why don't you just rally your resources for that process in November?" I mean, I don't feel good about the rush at the end, right? And Ruth, I thought the point you were making was any regional district can apply for this grant.
Correct.
Right? So...
Actually, your group, were you a regional group? No. See, that's probably why they didn't reach out to you.
Well, but...
Because you go to a regional school.
Regional schools, yeah.
What do you mean? The Hart Committee...
The Department of Revenue and I don't know...
Right. I mean, the Hart Committee represents...it was called into being by the select boards from our district towns to work on visioning for our district's future going forward. I mean, basically, it was our select boards and finance committees saying, "This is not a sustainable model. It's what can we do to envision another way?" And so the Hart Committee has been involved in this process for almost a year and has now gotten to the point where we've sort of gathered up the previous studies that have been done. We've looked at...because at first, we thought we were going to need to do a lot of data gathering. Turns out, there's been a ton of data gathering and projecting around these questions. So we had just gotten to the point, we were talking about what we really need to do is get some modeling. Like what are the implications of having a shared superintendent? What are the implications of having a shared business manager? What happens when you combine transportation contracts or, you know, all of that? We don't know anything about. And so our group was starting to work on an RFP that sort of gets at those kinds of questions for this group. Now all of a sudden, we have this other group with a bigger grant. It almost feels like, and I've said this to Michelle on the Hart Committee, we all should just be having a big summit at GCC, like a regional Western Mass summit where we all come together, where we all recognize the shared questions and concerns we have and we have one big information gathering experience with the state. Because you know, what's preventing us from moving forward is that we don't know. The towns don't know what they'd be giving up per autonomy. We don't know what we'd be giving up in terms of our model for our education. You know, there's just a lot of questions. So I feel like there's nothing wrong with joining this. It's going to be information gathering, the whole thing... The whole thing just feels hokey to me. Like, why are we doing it this way?
Was yours competitive? Your grant competitive or was it just, you know?
It was grant money that was provided by the Baker Administration for innovative ideas. It was, it didn't seem very competitive. They were, when they came to our town hall, David, you can tell me if you think this is true, they were excited about the number of towns. Like, almost every town in the state has gotten this money. And there are, it's to support best practices. So, one of the best practices in the list of 12 or so best practices was combining services for efficiencies. So, that's what we qualified under.
I just had a follow-up question, maybe to David. I'm not sure I understand what you were saying. But that's nothing new. So, my question is, which I think is a follow-up to what you said, is can we explore, if we decide tonight to join with Montague, Gil Montague and Franklin County in this regional grant for researching things, can we still explore the idea of combining, of sharing superintendents with even other districts? I mean, we have, what? Is that what, okay. So, this does not-
It's a free application to do a study of something. And I sort of-
So, Ruth, wait, wait, I haven't finished yet. I'm still trying to figure out what I'm saying. So, I have, oddly enough, I have three copies from Ralph Mahar Regional School, which I don't know if everybody else has. Three orange copies of the same thing. Am I supposed to have something different or?
You have two copies and one was not, there wasn't a written proposal to you.
No, I've got three of these of the same letter.
Oh, then you scored it.
I just scored on-
From Ralph Mahar.
Okay. I thought maybe I was supposed to have one from Mohawk and one from somewhere else. The only one we have, a letter from-
Marhar. Mohawk and Marhar gave you, she gave you a letter.
I don't have Mohawk. But you mentioned-
Mohawk contacted.
But you mentioned it in the board notes. So, I guess I'm boiling down to we can still, we can and probably should and probably will have to, explore other ideas of sharing staff. Central office staff. I'm not talking about teachers. We have a motion. I just want to clarify this before I vote on it, that's all. I wanted to know what precluded what, if anything. Thanks.
Phil has moved the motion. And I thought- Well, I don't think I have a second.
Could you please withdraw that? Because I think there's a few more questions. I didn't hear you. So, there's a motion on the floor to call the question, but I think if the maker and the second would withdraw them, we can answer a couple more questions. I, I'll for one, I'll be ready to vote very soon.
Do you have to vote on move the motion?
Yeah.
Excuse me?
You withdraw the motions you do not need to vote on.
I didn't think so. What mean?
But when you call the question, you call the question is to close debate and vote, but that motion, subsidiary motion itself, needs to be voted on. I was asking that it be withdrawn so we can continue discussion, get the last few questions on, and then I think the chairman will be ready to call the question without us voting on whether to hold the question. It's a prerogative.
I don't care to withdraw. I'm just wondering why we can't still discuss without withdraw.
You can't.
Have been. We have been.
When the question is called, you can't discuss.
And you have to vote on the question whether to have further discussion or not. Or, and if the motion to call the question passes, then you immediately go to vote on the-
You made the motion. I started and then we all started.
No, it was Bill made the motion.
No, not Bill made it.
He withdrew it, Bill.
Didn't hear him.
All right. Bill withdrew it.
Okay. Then we're fine.
I didn't hear you, Bill.
Okay. So, then Jeannie and Deb.
Ruth, how is your proposal significantly, significantly different from the Gil Montague proposal? Grant application.
I mean, I have a copy for you if you want to see it. I just didn't want to go down that road if it wasn't. It does what it said. It doesn't talk about one district or any district. It talks about creating a consolidated, consolidation of services to increase efficiencies across the region and to reduce redundancy. In addition, we would like to establish a central regions support center that would provide managerial accounting slash budgeting, human resources to all Franklin County. It's a much broader, bigger, outrageous proposal, which doesn't get at some of the things that you need right now. But, so, it was really an effort to maybe get the 200,000. It's really all about money with me.
So, when you were talking to someone-
The guy from the Department of Revenue.
Department of Revenue. From what you have said, this sounded more like what they were looking for.
He flat out said, he flat out said, this is what the state is looking for. And if you look, I gave you a packet from the MASE, MASSS Joint Conference. And if you look at the acting commissioner, he wrote things in here that are like, what is, what he's worried about, you know? We have too small, too many small schools. Improvements takes years to plan and so, we support superintendents to, how do we support them to stay longer in a district? Kids need more school time. Students need access to computer science. And the list goes on. There was another, you know, and it talks about getting 80% and talking, getting nothing, I mean, and equities. I think that the new commissioner sees it in equities and all of this. But there is a big, and I've known this forever, and maybe, you know, we want to have the DESE Regional School Office people come down. They couldn't come at this last meeting because they were both on vacation, but they know what the department wants. And the department wants you to not, I'm sorry. Can you hear me? Do I have a big enough sound? The department has, they get regional schools, but they also understand that they're not really being sustainable in the way they are right now. And Christine, who is just, I think she's kind of retired and still working, is just amazing. And they're the ones that brought forward the regional agreement in its condition right now. I don't think it's a if or, I think it's a like, how, you need the resources to be able to figure out what you want to do. And it's going to have to happen sooner than later. The Hart Committee's been working for a year. They have a lot of good information. Started by a town, but the difference between those two, I think, is the fact that it's asking for regionalization. It's asking for efficiencies with that. Do I still think you need a superintendent and a business manager? Yeah, you do. Does that help?
So, last night, I sat in on Marhar's regional planning committee meeting. And they have asked me to bring to the table and just let you know that they're looking for pretty much broader, what you just talked about. So, they, their immediate plans were to regionalize their elementaries from Wendell to Petersham. So, so, as they were talking last night, they said that that's good enough for like a couple of years, but what's beyond that to sustain them? So, they had talked about reaching a broader scope, trying to get all the towns, all the districts to come possibly to a joint meeting. Possibly to a joint meeting and talk about shared services as a starting point. So, I'm just putting that out there because they asked me to, they asked me to come back to the committee and put it on the table.
We could be part of the grant that we've been not invited to be part of and we could submit our own grant.
That's what I was just thinking.
Both. It sounds like all of us, the grant that you're suggesting, the work that the Hart Committee is about to, God only knows what we're supposed to do now, but this other grant, it's all the same questions, right? It's just asking for modeling and information so that we can make good decisions. So, just one idea.
With it being a regional school, well, I'm sorry. With it being a regional school district, you have access to that DESE, you know, and they have all the information, all the stats, everything there. And they'd come down and help you and consult it. I mean, it wouldn't, you're not going to have to go out and find a consultant because they're right there waiting to help, I think.
Okay. All the discussion finished? All right.
Is it possible at all to apply for an extension? Like, to say to the state, look, we just heard about this. Why didn't we know about this if you want us to do this work?
It's been out there, but I don't think it's going to be a big deal because if people want to wordsmith this and, you know, look at it tomorrow, it's a baseline. I'm not saying it's perfect. It's far from it, but it's enough, you don't have to get a lot in there. And then you could probably vote to, oh, the 16th, yeah.
I guess my question is, would there be time to collaborate with the Hart Committee? Which is a group that's already committed a lot of time and energy to the process of looking at questions like this.
It has to be in the 16th.
By, by 5 o'clock. So, David?
Let's deal with the question before us. And then, instead of immediately adjourning, we can have a discussion about what, in addition, we might wish to do.
Yeah, we do have another meeting. And as far as the time is concerned, I think maybe, maybe Gil Montague and the tech school had known about this prior to, because they had time enough to talk about it and come up with these ideas. They only brought Peggy and I in on it a week ago today. So, this is about as fast as we could work on it. We tried to, George, you have your hand up waving? Let us know.
Last Wednesday was the first that the tech school committee heard about it.
I wondered because, yeah, yeah. Yeah. Okay. All right. One thing from Martha and then the vote. Just a very simple question. So, we are now going to vote on, okay. And by voting in the affirmative on this does not preclude us from applying for another grant? I did not understand that before. I thought we were choosing one or the other. We can apply for both. Thank you. Now, Robin just came in and it wouldn't be fair, excuse me? We need to bring her up to snuff before she votes. So, maybe Ruth, you can just run a quick through and none of us interrupt. Just let her talk and then we can vote.
So, essentially, there's a proposal from Gil Montague to include us in their grant proposal, which the opinion is that it's not, even though it's written out a certain way, it's not necessarily cast in stone, but we could be a part of it. We had a discussion about that and what that looks like. We talked about the fact that we could still share services with superintendent and business manager separate from these, but to get through the next year or two or however long it takes, you will have that option. And then, there's a third option on the floor that you could potentially write a much larger grant, very broad thinking out there, not, you know, real immediate. And they came to the conclusion that they could probably do both if they wanted. And so, the one in front of you is the one that has a little bit more clarity, a little bit more direction around what they're looking at. And they have invited us in to participate if we so choose.
That's good enough. So, there's been a motion, a second on the floor. We're ready to vote. All those in favor of joining with the other two schools to apply for this feasibility study? Yeah. All right. Robin's not quite sure what, oh, she did have her hand up. Okay, I didn't see that. Yeah, unanimous.
Not get these.
Exactly. All right. So, now, was there going, although it is not on here, did you have questions on the other? Do you want to have Ruth apply for another grant? What's the plan, Sam? Yeah? Yeah.
I just wanted to say, in reading this, the CCC Best Practices Program, that's the program within which we applied for the best practice grant as a Hart Committee.
Where is it?
So, all of our towns would qualify for bonus points on this because- Yes, because all the towns have applied and been awarded. I don't, actually, I don't know if Lyden. So, Northfield and Warwick went in on a grant. I know Berniston got a best practices grant. Did Lyden? I'm not sure. Did they? I don't know if anyone knows if Lyden also did. So, it says, you know, if you choose a best practice and if all the towns in your community have signed up for the best practice program, there's different levels at which you get more points.
There was, I didn't, on the top, that would help the best practice. The next one down, I felt, I found a best practice that we could qualify for at all.
Yeah, I think it just means that the other towns have to have been participating in some best practice in this program. And I think we all have.
Does everybody want a second to read through this? Do you want someone, Ruth, to read it through for us? How do you want to proceed? Sharon? Make a motion that we ask Ruth to complete and submit this grant proposal.
Would you be willing to characterize it as broader? This broader grant? Because she's writing something that's a moving target and we should define it a little bit. Well, I've just add the word-
Broader within the-
This broader grant.
This broader grant, yeah. I second.
Okay. Okay, can you say it again? Make a motion that we, we ask Ruth to go ahead with this broader grant for the Efficiency and Regionalization Grant Program. As soon as she can.
Before the deadline.
By Thursday. David seconded it.
Do you have to post that? Does it have to be on the agenda?
No, if you're giving her that and then you would, the chair would be the one that would sign. So, if you're doing it-
The end. All right.
I second it.
Okay. Is there any new discussion? All those in favor of Ruth applying for this broader grant? All right, unanimous.
Okay, now we said that, who would like to help? I mean, did you have last time?
I'm definitely available to read.
Yeah, I mean, it's not, it wasn't perfect. It was just a bunch of ideas, so. But I think it's enough that maybe we can get it in by the 16th.
Look, that'll be good, the combined efforts, because she knows that the Hart Committee is brilliant.
Well, she's also a really good writer. And David has brilliant ideas. So, yeah, and anybody else, if you have, after reading it, have ideas, send me an email and then maybe we can get together whenever it's good. Yeah, you can steal it back. I have it on my computer.
Okay, great. All right. There is no-
There is nothing else before us tonight? Thank you very much. And a second to that motion?
Motion to adjourn, please, David.
Motion to adjourn, please, David. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. We will meet again in about 48 hours.